All right, I'm going to call to order the Pecosin Planning Commission for Monday, December 5th, and we will start with invocation. Please stand as you would like and join us for the Lord's Prayer.
Allah be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy stay our daily bread, and forgive us all trespasses. But deliver us from sin.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next amendment is the approval of the minutes from the regular session last month, November 7th. Is there a motion to approve those? This is written.
I think this may be incorrect here. I'm not sure if it was on that one. From October 17th, can we?
Yes, yes, from the October 17th.
Stevens wasn't here, I don't think, that day. I think that was me.
Oh, you know what? That might be just a typo on the date at the top. I think this is from the November 7th.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So Stevens was not here.
You are correct.
That was me, I believe. That should...
Yes, you are correct. Yes.
Yeah.
So on, under number two, under the recorded votes.
Oh.
Should be Grebel instead of Stevens. And then just the header date would be November 7th. Is there a motion with those amendments?
Except with the amendments, the minutes of the regular session, I guess it is, on November 7th.
Is there a second?
Second. Grebel? Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Chairman Emmett?
Aye.
Minutes passed with a vote.
Now, at this time, I would like to welcome anyone. This is the audience for visitors. So anyone who would like to address the commission for any items that are not part of the public hearing items coming up, if there's anything that you would like to say other than those, now is the time. And seeing none, I'm going to close the audience for visitors. I'm going to rearrange the agenda slightly because of information regarding items number two and three. I would like to make a motion for item number two, which is a request for a conditional use permit by Caleb Howard for the operation of a storage yard to be located at 789 Pecosin Avenue, Tax Map Parcel, 19-1-135, Zoned R1, Single Family Residence. I would like to make a motion to postpone that vote until the next regular session. We need to have the presentation on that today?
I don't believe it's necessary. I'll present it next month in the event someone is present for the public hearing and the people watching at home, they'll be able to view the presentation as well. And that meeting date, for that to be considered, and item three will be Thursday, January 19th.
I have a motion on the table to postpone that. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Grebel.
Aye.
All right. Commissioner Salak.
Aye.
Commissioner Schreiber. Schreiber, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman, the motion passes.
And then for item number three, the proposed constraint capital improvements plan for fiscal year 2024 and beyond, fiscal year 2028, because that is still in its draft state and being reviewed, I would also like to make a motion to postpone the vote until the next regular session, January 19th.
I'll second it.
Grebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman, the motion passes with a four vote.
So now, we're going to go back to item number one, which is a request for a conditional use permit by Matt Booth and Lynn Howard Overflow LLC for the operation of a tourist home to be located at 430 With Creek Road, Tax Map Parcel, 27-1-114, Zoned B2, Business Commercial. And Thomas or Wally, would you like to give a presentation?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. The application, as you just mentioned, is for a tourist home to be located at 430 With Creek Road. I will briefly recap, Madam Chair, the discussion we had in your work session prior to this regular session meeting. The application, I won't repeat the requests that you just stated, Madam Chair, but I will note the city code consideration in that our zoning ordinance defines a tourist home as a dwelling in which overnight accommodations are provided or offered for three or more transient guests. However, a tourist home is not a permitted use in any zoning district within the city, and because of that, is presented for your recommendation as a conditional use permit. The notice for tonight's hearing was advertised in the Daily Press, November 19th and November 26th, and adjacent letters were sent to necessary property owners on November 10th about the use, Madam Chair, per the application, as for a tourist home, fully furnished and outfitted home for lodging for 1 to 30 consecutive nights. This is the proposed site, 430 With Creek Road, Tax Map Parcel, 27, Tac 1, Tac 114. Property is Zoned B2 Business Commercial and is a single-family home built in 1949. The recommended conditions, Madam Chair, are as follows: The business will be subject to all applicable taxes determined by the commission or revenue to include a transient occupancy tax at time of implementation. That language is basically tied to some new state code language that the city has not yet adopted, but at such time, the business will be subject to. Second condition is that all signage shall be subject to architectural review to include staff determination, whether or not we could administratively approve signage, or if it would warrant approval by the Architectural Review Board, because the business is in the architectural control district. The third, recommended use, is that the use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations, and if at any time the use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies, the city council may revoke this permit. Fourth condition is that if at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, this permit should become null and void. At no such time shall more than two persons per bedroom occupy the dwelling. Sixth condition is that parking for the use shall be accommodated for onsite in a paved driveway and/or parking area as approved by community development staff. Parking spaces shall be provided at a rate of one per unit and one per bedroom. And the seventh is that city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. I will go back to the proposed site side. I'm sure you've all had a chance to read the memo, but staff is recommending approval with the listed conditions, and, Madam Chair, I'm happy to recap any of the conversation we had in the work session. You would like me to, or answer any additional questions you may have.
Will the additional parking in the rear, will that be subject to any type of surface, all-weather surface, or will it just be on the ground, or will there be gravel, or?
The condition, Commissioner Grebel reads that it should be provided onsite in a paved driveway and/or parking area as approved by community development staff. I think that provides the applicant with a little leverage for it to be gravel, pea gravel, paved concrete, pavers, but there's no requirement that all the parking area be paved with certain materials, no, ma'am.
Just a clarification in the city code, as I'm reading in the presentation, is, as written right now, a tourist home is not permitted for use in any zoning district within the city.
That is correct.
Officially, so there may be unofficial tourist homes that haven't come before the committee, correct? Hypothetically speaking, there could be.
Hypothetically. Hypothetically, it's a possibility.
So, my question is, I understand we're looking at this as is right now, this is, the tourist home definition is in our city code.
Correct.
As of right now, and it's always been there, we've just never had a conditional use permit application before, correct?
I believe that's correct.
To the best of your knowledge.
But I will not give you a certain...
No, to the best of your knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
In many years.
In many years, I don't believe there's been another application for a tourist home.
Okay, so, you may not have the answer, but that's okay, I'm going to ask, the planning commission approving a conditional use permit for this dwelling as a tourist home, does it open us up to any additional liability that's not common in a business or residence already?
I don't think by nature of tourist home being a permitted use in any zoning district, it opens up the commission or the city for any liability, and any tourist home, short-term rental, or serviced accommodation would be considered by you all as a conditional use permit.
Questions before we open up the public hearing? With that being said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to address the commission pertaining to this request, please come on up and just state your name and address.
Is there any input you'd like for me to see? Is there a real address?
Yeah, actually, if you don't mind coming up. I think there were some questions, particularly that arose during the work session, that would be helpful, not to put you on the spot. Can I get your name and address, please?
Lynn Howard and my Pecosin address are, I'm nomadic, so I live in several places.
Whichever you would like on the record.
Okay, we'll go with 430 With Creek Road.
Okay, thank you. One question that I had is whether there would be a responsible party, either yourself or the proprietor, that would be available to resolve any problems that might arise, that might come up at the property.
Absolutely.
Okay, and you will be relatively local, you'll be available at any time that it's being rented.
I'll have staff that are available. Our standard is within 15 minutes of the property is where we have people that are available.
Can I, and this may be for Thomas, or maybe I just would be curious of history, I know it said that letters were sent to the necessary property owners, has, on November 10th, was there any feedback from those letters?
There was not. The two properties directly adjacent, to my best knowledge, are by the applicant. However, adjacent letters were also sent to the commercial uses across the street, and staff did not receive any input from any of the adjacent property owners.
So the other home beside it is also owned by you, Lynn?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, with that, so much, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any questions?
Yes, I ask a point of clarification, and just please bear with me on this one.
Sure.
So, the vote tonight, so let's, I just have a question about two paths. So hypothetically, it gets passed by the commission today with these recommendations, that these, are using the right recommended conditions, okay? So, down the line, as we know, there's still uncertainty of what wording's going to be when the new, something comes to light. So, if six months from now, there are new conditions or state code that conflict with any of these items that we put forth, are we, do we then readdress it, or this is, this stands with these 1 through 7 recommendations for as long as the property falls within these seven recommended conditions?
This use will be grandfathered with the conditions that you all approve this evening, and I am not the city attorney, and he is present, but I would tell you, I wouldn't anticipate a conflict or a situation in which speculative state code would overrule anything that we've recommended to you all tonight.
And if a tourist application came to us from a residential area in Pecosin, like this, before things changed down the line, it would be held to the same recommended considerations, or those changed based on that is a residential zone versus this is a business zoned?
I think most of these, if not all, would be incorporated, just the nature of the permit application, a bit different, where this is a single-family residence in a commercial district, and the speculative one, the hypothetical application may be a residential dwelling in a residential district, and at that time, the commission or staff may have additional conditions based on that, that it would be in the neighborhood, but I can tell you with a fair amount of confidence that, at the very least, the seven conditions we've recommended for you tonight would be included.
Because for, right now, from my perspective, this is in a business district, so it's very different from when we talk about down the line of whether it's tourist home, whether it's short-term rental, whether you get specific and name the, you know, it's an Airbnb, you know, down the line, it's a very different residential versus the commercial location of this aspect.
The conditional use permit would allow us to do that.
That's right.
To address each individual, that's the beauty of it.
That's exactly right.
Because I think when you, this is aside down the line, but it's very different looking at the parking requirements of one per unit and one per bedroom, five cars in a business area, versus if you're looking at some residential houses, when you're looking at five bedrooms, six bedrooms plus, then you're looking at 10 to 12 cars, which is very different from how we are looking at this as a business.
Right, and, you know, of course, all these applications do, you know, none are the same, and certainly, looking forward, you can assume that if they do start for residential dwellings and residential units, each will have very different layouts, you know, for parking, so it's something you all will consider case by case.
But that requirement may change as well, then, right? The two, the one per unit and one per bedroom, because like Christine said, I mean, if you're in a residential neighborhood, and it's one of these huge houses that I know is currently used as a short-term rental, you know, you're looking at, like you said, 10 to 12 parking spaces, so are you going to, are we going to be holding these folks accountable to that two, that one and two per, or one and one per bedroom, the same as we do here? I guess is what I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
But I mean, the chances are residential is not going to be able to meet that requirement, except that, maybe their rear yard would hold it, but there's no, no clear-cut, in my mind, there's no clear-cut parking pad or designation that all the parking be lined, or gravled, or whatever the case may be. In this particular situation, let's say it's not going to be gravled at all, it's just going to be on the dirt, but there's sufficient area for six, what is it, five parking spaces, where residential may not be able to meet that unless it's in their rear yard, so I'm just saying, I think we have to be careful that we apply it across the board regardless of whether it's in residential, whether it's in commercial, because I think both, but they both have advantages and disadvantages, and that we need to be careful that we are not applying it disproportionately.
I tend to agree with the general statement, but, you know, I do think, I do think the conversation has transitioned a little outside of this application.
Yeah, I agree.
And we will take future applications, case by case, and the very nature of a conditional use permit is that we staff will recommend conditions to you all as we think are appropriate for the use, and we'll tailor those to each application, not arbitrarily, but certainly with the neighborhood in mind. So at that point, the recommended condition could change to be less or more restrictive, but we won't know that until we see future applications.
Can I ask what your anticipation is in review of the parking, what the community development would be primarily looking at? I mean, just out of curiosity, I'd like to know, we're leaving it up to community development, but...
The intention is so that the uses, the speculative hypothetical uses that are not this application in the future, do not create a traffic issue on streets in neighborhoods, or that they don't park an extraordinary amount of vehicles in a front yard or encroach into a neighbor's property, but park in a paved driveway as this condition states, or a designate, as a parking area as approved by us, basically, in another side or the rear of the property, to avoid those things.
This one doesn't have on-street parking.
No.
No.
So that, I think that makes it even a different, you know, the paved parking on the side makes it, yeah, generally, everything about this particular location is unique for this.
I was just curious what your proposal is to the applicant for the surfacing of the parking area. Are you recommending that it be all-weather, or?
We recommend, as the condition states, parking for the use shall be accommodated for onsite in a paved driveway and/or parking area as approved by community development staff. So, we, I'll say, highly encourage that the parking be provided in a paved driveway, while keeping in mind that if an applicant shows appropriate parking in a rear yard, I don't necessarily think the composition of materials is something we should be required, but we'll approve or disapprove of case by case, because it may be gravel, they might extend the driveway, it could be pea gravel, it might be rocked, it could be pavers. So, I think, what's that?
I mean, do we know what the intent is?
On this application?
Just out of curiosity.
Well, on the, if I can direct your attention to the application itself, it does show the concrete driveway, wind sidewalks, and the rear. I think the applicant could certainly speak better to the desired materials and the rear of the home better than I can, but, you know, of course, when showing those, will be approved or not by staff.
Thomas, as written, the recommended conditions all fall in line with what currently is at the state level, like current?
The conditions aren't necessarily tailored to state code on tourist homes, which I don't believe even exists, but conditions tailored to this application and the city's current definition of tourist home.
Thank you.
So in essence, they go above and beyond what the tourist home or short-term rental regulations are, this is customized to our, to our...
The tourist home definition is, quite frankly, all that exists, is that, the definition exists, and the use isn't permitted in any zoning district in the city. And the conditions for, I'll say, lodging uses, being hotels and motels, don't apply in this situation, but the conditions we've provided for you are what we have devised of staff that we believe are appropriate for the use.
And I mentioned this in the work session, I appreciate the applicants coming forward and officially putting, setting forth for the city, going in front of the planning commission and the city council, and going through and making a formal application for this. I do appreciate that, and I actually hope that it is a springboard, that more and more will come up in front of us, conditional use permits for current, any current short-term rentals or vacation homes. I hope they start coming forward. Any other?
Are you ready to make a motion?
I'm ready. I'm ready to make a motion to approve this with the conditions that have been presented by the planning department.
Is there a second? I will second.
Grebel?
Aye.
Commissioner Salak?
Aye.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Chairman Emmett?
Aye.
Motion carries with the next speaker.
All right, and this is just a recommendation. This will go in front of the city council for, in an upcoming meeting, they will make the final decision. Thank you again for coming and presenting to us. All right, communications and correspondence, Thomas, do you have anything?
I think it serves as a good springboard into conversations to follow after the first of the year. You know, this is one of the tricky aspects of city planning, and especially when there are so many state code implications, now hypothetical, non-existent, subject to amendment, and it's, but like I said, I think it was a productive conversation, and I know we look forward to bringing to you language the whole zoning ordinance, but certainly to address short-term rentals.
Any, I guess for the January meeting, you're anticipating the items two and three, any additional?
Not at this time. Not at this time, um, and, and just for the public's sake, Madam Chair, uh, that meeting will be January 9th, 7:00 PM, regular session. You see fit, we can have a work session prior to, uh, but we will, uh, at your direction. But I don't, I don't anticipate, uh, another application for that meeting or for you all to consider anything, uh, more than the other conditional permit and make a recommendation on the CCIP.
Thomas, do you know if there's been any further considerations or conversations on the storage facility, um, with Creek Road?
Cancel, um, I, I, I can tell you that council will consider it Monday night. Of course, with the recommendation made by you all, uh, the other discussions unaware of, but my materials are prepared, and I'll make a, I'll say, an expanded, uh, presentation based on the conversation you all had and, uh, the recommendation you made. But they'll, but city council will, will make a decision, will at least open that public hearing, uh, Monday night.
So for the next, uh, planning commission meeting on the 19th, uh, do you guys, I'd like to poll, poll the commission to see if you would like to meet for a work session ahead of time to, uh, discuss these two applications prior to the public hearings, or if you'd like to hear from applicants or the city staff, um, and then discuss at the regular session.
I think that if there's any new information that comes up, that I would request a work session, because I think it allows us to get a lot of clarification, or we have to have people sit and bear through it with us, so, um, if there's any major stuff, new information that comes up.
And I, you know, typically, our, our practice, uh, you know, in that situation, myself or Wally will reach out to the chairwoman and seek her guidance and then take her direction. So if that happens, we'll, uh, we'll make sure to contact her.
I'm so sure we may not need a work session on that number.
Or we might not, we will.
We will likely need one on that.
Um, and that.
We'll have to make it at six.
But, huh?
When is the, uh, deadline to make that decision, if we want a work session or not?
Well, I would need to advertise for that meeting on the 12th of January and, um, the 5th. So, given the imminent holiday season, uh, I would respectfully request that direction from you by the end of the week.
Let's, you know, let's go ahead and let's call for a 6:30 work session. Um, in particular, for item number two, and for item number three, I know in the past there have been some, uh, city staff that have come to present their CCIP, um, recommendations to us, and that would, I don't know if they plan on doing that for the regular session, but that would be, um, good for the regular session. Probably, I don't know if we need to discuss that much during the work session, if they're going to make recommendations.
I, it, it's typically in the ad, uh, you know, the work session, I'll almost disclaimer is that the items, uh, for public hearing will be discussed, so we can certainly discuss it if you wish.
Okay.
And who is the, uh, that CCIP for you, uh, is above my pay grade.
Okay.
Um, but if it, uh, but that will be certainly presented, uh, to you in that regular session.
So, yeah, let's do a 6:30, and then, uh, we'll probably prioritize the second. Anything else, Thomas?
Um, nothing for me, no ma'am.
I don't have much of anything, except to tell you that the subdivision did get adopted by the, uh, city council, sorry, Joe. And, uh, so I want to thank the planning committees for all their work on that, uh, thank you very much. Now we've got the zoning ordinance, so, we're working on that.
Bonnie?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Kristi?
I'm good. I'm good.
All right, anything down there? No, no, Andy, okay. All right, well, with that, um, I'll just say, yeah, Merry Christmas, it's been a great year, and, um, we'll go ahead and join the meeting, thank you very much, everyone.